Welcome to the general purpose meeting of the Scranton School Board. It's Thursday, August 17, 2017. We please stand for flag to raise.
Flag to raise to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Dwyer.
Mr. Casey.
Present.
Mr. Dwyer.
Present.
Mr. Duffy.
Present.
Mr. Lush.
Here.
Mr. McCandless.
Present.
Mrs. Olewski.
Present.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Mr. Timlin.
Present.
Mr. Sheridan.
Present.
Nine present zero.
I'll have a sign in sheet, Joan O'Toole.
O'Toole.
O'Toole, one.
As a concerned taxpayer, I have two issues to address tonight. First, I am deeply disturbed by the Times Tribune's article dated June 25th concerning its seventeen annual report comparing the performance of thirty-seven school districts on seventeen standardized tests and the SAT. Our school district failed to meet the state average in even one area. Now, I understand that our district has a high percentage of special needs students, non-English language speaking students, and students from low-income families. Nevertheless, I do not believe that these factors explain our district's abysmal performance since twenty-three of the thirty-seven school districts not only met but exceeded at least half of the state averages. Please comment after I finish my remarks on your plans to improve our district's future performance. Second, I am equally concerned by the board's failure to resolve its nearly forty million-dollar budget deficit resulting in our district being placed on the Department of Education's financial watch list. I read this morning's newspaper article about PFM's draft report with great interest. While I agree with Mrs. Boland that something must be done to eliminate no-bid contracts, change orders, and cost overruns, I do not believe that these initiatives by themselves will even come close to bringing the budget in line, especially when one considers that salaries and benefits account for seventy-nine percent of expenditures and nearly eighty-six percent of revenues. So please explain how you, in concert with the teachers' union, intend to bring our district back to financial health. In addition, what can we, the taxpayers, expect in the event of a takeover by a state receiver? Will their fix include layoffs and school closures? Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our public list. Move on to our resolution for labor relations. Director Schuster.
The members of the board of school directors of the city of Scranton, whereas pursuant to Title 43 PACSA 1101.802 Fact-Finding Amendment. The Scranton School District and the Scranton Federation of Teachers jointly agree to participate in fact-finding set forth in Act 88 of 1992 and the Pennsylvania Employee Relations Act, Act 195 of 1970, and more specifically in the statute referenced above. Whereas, honor about, it's July 31st, correct? Mr. Menor.
Yeah, it's actually, July 21st is actually the date of the hearing.
Oh, it wasn't the 21st?
Yes.
Okay, July 21st, 2017, submission of both written and oral testimony at the time of the hearing and the matter. The fact-finder issued his recommendations and whereas the fact-finder issued an order directing for a ten-day period commencing at the board vote occurring on or before August 11, 2017. The contents of the recommendations will remain confidential until such time as the parties had the opportunity to consider whether to accept or reject recommendations. Whereas the Scranton School Board rejected the fact-finding report on August 10, 2017, is required to accept or reject the fact-finding report a second time within ten days following the dates specified by PA regulations. And therefore be it resolved that the Scranton School District hereby reject the fact-finding report and the recommendations of the fact-finder respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question.
Under question, Mr. Chairman, a yes vote is a vote to reject.
A yes vote is a reject.
Vote to reject. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandless.
Yes.
Mrs. Olewski.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Timlin.
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan.
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Move on to recommendation superintendent committee. Director Olewski.
Yes, can she. To the members of the board of school directors of the city of Scranton, is the recommendation of the superintendent and personnel committee that the attached list of appointments, assignments, retirements, resignations, and leave of absence be approved. Appointments are effective upon receipt of proper criminal records, immigration, medical, and child abuse. Salaries are accordance to collective bargaining agreement. Rise per attached, respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question.
I have a few things, other questions. Firstly, all the names that are listed in Section A, are they all absolutely apparent because of and necessary due to class size and structure throughout the Scranton School District?
Superintendent.
Yes.
Secondly, in Part B, I would like to, and I don't know if I could do this in form of a motion or at least being that we are rescinding Part B, I'd like to see those two programs bottled into one and offer that salary at seventy-five thousand rather than what Ann Salerno's salary goes to, one hundred and eight thousand. That's all I have, Mr. Menor.
I'd also like to echo Mr. Duffy's suggestion on Part B for all of those positions to be rolled into one as they were in the past. I'm looking at.
Is that a motion to amend, Mr. Duffy?
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay, and I will ask for rule number eight to be enforced at this time. Until that resolution is put in writing, we do not have an opportunity.
Absolutely, that's why I didn't do it. I figured out what to have. But I'd like to, I'd like them to spark favor of putting that aside until we get a written motion.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need a second.
Okay, then we just put it aside.
The other thing is, Ann Salerno, what day is she officially?
She's already departed. She's out until December on the medical.
Okay, now looking at Section A, after retirements and the society, that was a recommendation of the superintendent to hire twenty-eight people, were needed? Is that the correct number?
That was it, at the last blush, yes. And we held out the special education positions until all the bids fell and then at our last meeting requested direction from the board whether to move forward with those special ed positions and we were instructed to do so.
So that was a total of twenty-eight, and then we moved, we put the classroom coaches back into regular teaching positions?
Yes, we did.
So we'd be hiring about twenty-four, if I'm correct?
Twenty-four of the thirty-nine.
When it's all said and done, we will be hiring more and that is because we've had five resignations on top of the retirements.
So the resignations will be added to the total?
Right. They are.
However, those resignations are separate from the incentive.
They are separate from the incentive.
So the incentive netted us from twenty, from thirty-nine, we hired back twenty-four, correct? So we saved fifteen.
It'll be twenty-three.
So we saved sixteen.
Yes.
So we saved.
Just the incentive, yes.
Just the incentive, we were able to, we were able to remove sixteen jobs through attrition.
Yes.
Bill, do you know approximately what that savings will be with sixteen teachers and their benefits net, what are we saving in the district?
I don't know. I mean, it was one point eight.
At ten, so we can calculate that.
That's pretty well sufficient amount, the benefits in it.
Yes.
We could say over two million.
Probably about two, two, three.
That would be correct.
Okay, anything else, any questions?
Yeah, and all these positions have been posted and interviewed and.
All, these positions all came off the eligibility list.
And I'm seeing special education, one, two, three, six of them. Do we, is it another three? That will be higher to make it a total of twenty-three if we're going to go with replacing what came off of the retirements.
Remember, this is after the bid process, so there's probably special ed teachers did bump into regular ed classrooms, so it doesn't match up from what we, what left to what we're refilling.
Okay, so I'll bet twenty-eight minus the four, we have twenty-three, and here we have fourteen positions plus the seven last time, so that's twenty, it should be about twenty-one positions, so.
That's twenty-one, we'll have ten more.
So it's gonna be ten.
That's retirements and the other factors that are.
Five.
We had three, we had four permanent subpositions last year that we had fill this year.
That's all aside from the incentive.
That's all aside from the incentive.
Necessary to meet.
That's all contractual. Yes, so to be able to open the doors on September sixth.
So from here on out, it's gonna be ten.
There should be ten more.
Professionals.
Anything else, any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandless.
Yes.
Mrs. Olewski.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Timlin.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan.
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Moving to budget finance, Director Schuster.
To the members of the board of directors, is the recommendation of the budget finance committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas in accordance with the real estate tax law, any property not sold at individual sale shall be listed in a repository sale of unsold properties. The following properties have been sold and will be returned to the tax tags with the Tax Planning Bureau. Addresses are 1022 Prescott Ave., 524 North Rebecca Ave., 1003 Luzern Street, 1103 Alby Ave., and 2224 Washington Street. Therefore be it resolved that this school district of the city of Scranton does hereby approve the above referenced properties for repository sale pursuant to the real estate tax sale law, Section 627 of Set Act. This resolution is subject to the approval of other taxing bodies respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under the question. No question, roll call.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandless.
Yes.
Mrs. Olewski.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Timlin.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan.
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Special education, Director Olewski.
To the members of board of directors, the special education committee hereby recommends the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas the school district of the city of Scranton is subject of administration proceedings in several suits. Within the appropriateness of a student's special education programs have been challenged or suits have been filed in the matters of CH and SA. And whereas, the parties have reached a settlement agreement in this matter upon the terms and conditions previously provided for your consideration. And whereas be it resolved that the settlements as indicated above be approved upon the terms and conditions as described, and the superintendent or director of special education are hereby authorized to execute all or any or all documents necessary to consummate the matter, respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under the question.
Solicitor, Menor, just for the record, the settlement numbers that are attached.
Five thousand, Mr. Casey, one was, and I think the other was ten thousand.
I'm interested, and we had this question posed to us at our last meeting, and I felt I failed to meet my obligation. The question that was asked us is, can't we have more discussion, more explanation about these lawsuits? And the fact that we can't, and Mr. Menor may want to expand on that.
Well, there's a reason we use initials and not names, it's a minority, and there's a privacy right, in some cases, a HIPAA right, and certainly there's a Student Act that's the equivalent of HIPAA. We would be actually violating the law if we did that. So I can talk about the amount and the appropriateness of those student records can only be raised by that student if he's age eighteen or his parents. And a violation of that act is a very serious offense, just like HIPAA. It operates a lot like HIPAA, and I'm using it as an example, it has a different acronym, but it's something that everyone knows and understands.
Thank you, Mr. Menor.
Anything else, any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandless.
Yes.
Mrs. Olewski.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Timlin.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan.
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
That exhausts the resolutions for this evening's meeting. If there's anything else under business.
I'd just like to, if we could, I know there was a lot of questions posed by one of the speakers tonight, and I know there are big questions and our complex answers, but I was wanting to, if we had anything prepared to speak to that.
Sure, I do have a presentation prepared on what the plan is. But we started with a strategic plan for the district, and we identified those areas in the district that needed improvement. And there were four areas in particularly, teaching and learning being the very first and foremost. The second was talent management, how we would staff, recruit, and develop our employees. The third one was to improve our systems and processes, and the fourth one was to engage the community and improve the culture under the umbrella of Scranton One. With that, we have taken that strategic plan and aligned the state comprehensive plan to the strategic plan, cascaded that down to the school improvement plans and into the individual classrooms with teacher learning objectives and principal learning objectives for the school. We also have been working on an aligned instructional system, which is part of teaching, the teaching and learning focus of the strategic plan, and with that, we are developing curriculum to align to the Common Core standards of Pennsylvania. Prior to me arriving here, that work had only just begun. We've made quite a bit of progress on that in the past few years. We're also working on pacing guides on how instruction is delivered and at what pace throughout the district, and common assessments to go along with the curriculum. We're also looking at, and have not figured out the best way to do this yet, but collaborative professional learning that would be embedded in the school day for our teachers. We're doing data reviews in all of our schools to analyze where our students are not achieving with certain anchors, and we're looking at those and offering interventions and enrichments to our students. We're just implementing, as you heard lastly, the cyber school, but there's more benefit to the cyber school than only online learning. It offers tutorials for our students who are struggling in grades six to twelve. That just touches briefly on what we're doing to improve student achievement here in the district. We have set lofty goals for the direction we would like to move the district. We feel those goals are important because we're educating students for the future, for jobs we don't even know exist yet. And with all of that, we feel that if we are able to put the strategic plan completely implemented into place, over time, we will gain the results that we are looking for. And results do take time, so our work together, this board and this team of administrators here and at the local schools, have just begun this work two years ago. So it will take a few years for us to see a change. But we do have school performance profiles, and if you look at those online, I think you will see we are growing our students. It's called value-add growth, so we may not be, it may not look like our achievement is going up, but at this point in time, what we're seeing in many of our schools is that our students are growing from the time they begin a school year to the end of that school year. Ideally, we want to see nine months or more of growth in each of our students, and we are seeing growth. There's a good deal of growth in science and English language arts. Last year, I think they showed us that we were number four in the state in growth in our English language arts. So we're creeping on to where I hope the community expects us to be and in time, hope to be.
I'm very pleased to hear that you're looking at these issues and implementing, you know, developing plans and implementing them and tweaking them as you go. I don't think that a lot of these issues are very new. My mother, rest her soul, just passed away, she was nearly ninety-nine. She did not speak English as a young child. She's taught kindergarten, okay? She also graduated Scranton Central High School in nineteen thirty-seven, in the middle of the Depression. Okay, so these are not new issues to Scranton. But, you know, when you compare us to the rest of the school districts in northeast of Pennsylvania, we've got to recognize that we have issues, and if there's anything you can steal from their best practices, do so. I would also strongly recommend that we consider partnerships with the local colleges and universities, above and beyond student-teacher programs. You've got a wealth of expertise at the University of Scranton, Marywood, Lackawong College, the community medical college for health sciences.
I'm very happy to say that we are, we have strong partnerships with all of those groups, and I can specifically tell you what each is doing to help us to improve our student.
These nonprofits not paying taxes need to give back to the community in terms of supporting things like the Scranton School District.
And they are, they're wonderful partners to us.
Also, pass them to all retired professionals in the area. Let them give back something instead of just sitting on their fat tushes, okay? You've got a lot of professional organizations that, oh, don't laugh at me, you know.
I'm sorry, it was funny though. Forgive me, but it was funny. It was amusing, I'm sorry. I wasn't laughing at you, I thought it struck me as funny.
Well, I'm here to tell you, you know, that you've got a lot of retired personnel in Lackawong College and in the general Scranton area that would love to be invited to impart their expertise. And I know there are logistical issues like background checks and everything else, but if these people are willing to assist you, you can take advantage. And all these professional organizations, like the Philharmonic for music, okay, other activities, American Bar Association, get them in there. I don't care, okay, but we owe our students the best we can give them, you know. You go down to Washington DC and go to the IRS headquarters, and above the entrance it says, "Taxes are the price we pay for civilization," okay? And most people understand the logic of paying taxes, we just want our taxes to make a difference, okay? And where you can get it for free, God help you, go after it, okay? And then, of course, this is my second issue, is the budget. How are we wrapping you onto that animal?
I'm here, I'm listening.
Well, you tell me, you know, I don't want to see us go into receivership. You realize that the district goes into receivership, PEO is gonna have to at least bang and get the city out on a two-year exit plan.
Mrs. O'Toole, it's PEO has no reference to the school district.
I know, I know, I'm just, well, they're idiots, okay? They're idiots because it's one city and we taxpayers have just one, you know, checking account, and we pay two taxing bodies, okay? So they may have nothing to do with the Scranton School District directly, but I'm saying, I don't see how they, and all fairness can say that the city's return to financial health if the school district goes into receivership.
Joan.
Don't get there from here.
Can I just say something? You know, there's, here's the state ready to step in and save us money, okay, or try to save us money, or tell us how to save money or get out of the debt we're in, okay? This board over the years had to make some very difficult decisions as far as the campus went, buildings went. We were dealt with a lot of old faculties here, okay? It costs us a lot of money. Now, the federal government, as you know, and the state government has cut back so much on funding and has never, don't shake your head no.
Well, I understand, I really.
No, I'm looking at Marie, she shook her head no, and she's wrong, okay? They have cut back so much on our funding, and guess what? Our mandates cost more and more each year, all right? And they don't match it. They do not match it. They do not help us in any way. And you know what? It stinks. It stinks from right there at sixteen-hundred Pennsylvania Avenue. That's where it stinks, where that president or any former president should have known enough what his priorities should have been, the United States Congress and United States Senate, what's important? And that's education. And you were right when you said about the IRS, about taxes and their model and all this. Well, they're not putting the money where it should be.
Well.
And I have to shadow on that, in the last four or five years. Joan, all due respect, all due respect to all your comments, and Marie, all due respect to you too. But I'm just telling you, if we have never been abandoned, we are being abandoned now. We're not the only district that's in financial shape, or that shape, all right? No, we don't want to have a district full of failures here. We don't want to cut programs, but we're trying our best, all right? We don't, you know, we come up to the plate and try to hit a home run every time, but you know what? Negotiations are negotiations are negotiations. If we don't agree on a negotiation, teachers go out on strike, and when they go out on strike, we have no control over it, because guess what? We're not in control of that either. The state is, and they run and hide. I'm sorry, but they have. This is something that could have been an essential tool, all right? Because as far as I'm concerned, a teacher's job is very important to the public, is very important to the welfare of this city, and they should be held in that bracket, okay? The state should not be hurrying and hiding from this responsibility to help these local boards, but what they do is constantly shove it down our throats and give us nothing in return. Here, fix it, you fix it. Now we gotta go after people like you sitting there, and it's terrible. We have to pick your pockets just to make them look good, and I'm sorry, it's a tough job here. It's an awful job when we don't get support.
Well, you know, the taxpayers have a right though to know whether or not, you know, what's coming down the road for them.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Absolutely.
And the whole act, it's gonna be major tax increases, it's going to be receivership, where the state is gonna go in there and call the tune, and if the state does come in, what do you expect from it?
Well, we agree, we agree, but we're just as blinded as the public right now, okay? Because four years ago, or three years ago, when they had the impasse, that was half of our problem. We were under, we were balancing, and then when the impasse came and millions of dollars was set back from the school district for many months, and then they start paying very slow back the money that was coming. We had to go out and get a loan just to float the school district to keep it going. So in the last three years, this board has been working very hard to make sure they try to keep it balanced out. The deficit, a big part of this deficit is caused by the state, because the impasse occurred in the eight, nine months that we didn't restart from federal money.
And we can't reform pensions. It's a state-controlled pension. This local board right here, we look for them, we look to them because we don't have that authority. We don't have that power. Can I add something, Bobby? I want to add something to this. This year's pension obligation, and in 2010, in 2010, the pension obligation for the state of Pennsylvania under Peers was five point eight percent of total payroll. Right now, it's thirty-two point six percent. Our total payroll is a little over a hundred million dollars. Before we do anything, Mrs. O'Toole, we have to pay the state, that's been a state employee retirement fund, thirty-four million dollars, not five point eight million, like it was seven years ago. And it has been incrementally increased every single year that I'm on this.
And it has been incrementally increased every single year that I'm on this board since twenty thirteen. It hasn't gone up a million dollars. It's, in some years, it's actually doubled. Now, do we have issues with our budget that we can, that we can help internally? Yes, there are some, there are some pathways that we hope to, and it won't be easy. Absolutely won't be easy, but we have some opportunities. But what Mr. Lesch and Mr. Sheridan just told you is, in all honesty, this has been the solution of the General Assembly, starting in twenty-ten, to fill the pension hole created by the meltdown in two thousand and eight. Now, so our friends on Wall Street can be ultimately the people we point to. They broke our retirement system. They literally bankrupted Wisconsin's, Iowa's, Ohio's. State retirement systems went literally into the red. Ours didn't go that far. But our projections, in order for the retirement demands to be met over the next ten to fifteen or twenty years, requires us to fill a hole. And the state has said the districts have to fill it, not the state. The state refuses to tax on all kinds of levels. They still don't have a balanced budget. They haven't had a balanced budget in three years. It's a shadow budget. But we still keep getting, we get the result. And quite honestly, like, we voted this past year to not raise taxes. We didn't want to. Last, in the last two weeks, you may have read, because we're not on a fiscal year, but all the other school districts in Lackawanna County or that have, that are in some part in Lackawanna County, like Trail and North Pocono, they're in two counties, three counties. Every one of those districts that are on a fiscal year have raised taxes for the seventeen, eighteen fiscal year. They're all raising their taxes. We are capped. We have to apply for an opportunity, in order to go above the cap. Like, right now, we can't borrow anymore. So we're in a lot of trouble. And we understand where you're at. I'm a homeowner too. And I'm with you. But this is not a, this is not a creation entirely of our doing, by any means, by any means. But, you know, and we're fighting with it.
And I'll tell you, Joan, there was something that came along probably ten years ago now, maybe a little more, okay? The HomeStar program, you know, to help, to help people with their taxes and so forth, all right? Four people on fixed incomes, all right? We signed on to a deal with cap taxes that not, and would have to go to referendum to raise taxes over that cap, okay? Or put into the state for special permission to raise our taxes, okay? We did that with the hope of the miracle of gambling being approved in Pennsylvania. We were told, oh, the state's going to meet all these expectations. Before you know it, there'll be no school tax. We are going to eliminate school tax, just as they're preaching again now, and they're not doing it. We signed on to a deal, okay, that literally cut our own throat. And, you know, we looked to them again for the leadership, and we get them. We get them. And I don't blame every legislator. I don't blame every senator, okay? But there's a minority and there's a majority. And it seems that the majority that's been running the wagon is running it without horses. Either that or the horses got blinders and they're not seeing what's going on. And that's the problem. They're not hearing people like you, okay? We are. We are. As the local board here, and like every other board in this county and this state, all right? We're here and we're the villains.
And leaders, we meet with our legislators all the time. Super dinner, haven't we not? We work with them. And their talent is the same thing. Our hands are tied in Harrisburg. Majority conquers all, okay? They take over and they tell us what they want and what they don't, just like any of them. And that's the problem. So we go to our legislators and they say, our hands are tied. What are we going to do? So we're trying to work with them and they're trying to work with us to try to get everything we can get through, but it's tough. It's not easy. It's not easy. I wish that everybody could sit behind this board for a month or six months and see what we do and what we do on an everyday basis to try to close the gap and try to make the best education we can for our children. Not an easy task. Not an easy task at all.
I wonder why we don't have a tune filled for every student here.
I'm sorry?
I wonder why we don't have more citizens here.
We asked. We have public leaders. We asked the public.
These people may not understand, you know?
I agree. I think citizens should come, give their input, so we know what their views and we can explain to them like we're doing tonight. Our views from the state, from our board, how, what we're doing within our board to try to bring the budget down with the registration and the district, we're doing it. I agree with you. People should have more input.
It's going to be too late when these people receive their taxes. It's too late that they ask them questions.
Mrs. Odoan, for an example of tonight, with the retirement incentive we offered a little while back, we did save one point eight million dollars.
Actually, more, more time.
And with asking for our classroom coaches that were back in the classroom, it saved us another four positions that we wouldn't have to hire, hiring bringing the total over two million, close to three million. So that's just an example of what was saved tonight.
See, from this year's budget.
I would be back here as often as I can with a seat in the Harvard Press, but I think you know that. It's too late once people receive their taxes that they're going to come here and...
You know, Joan, in manufacturing, it's been like, do more with less, okay? But with education, they want us to do more with less, okay? But again, the strikes help us. Those labor, you know, labor disputes help us. No. You know, they're such underlying kind that fosters, that, it's unbelievable. And again, we don't have, we don't have the support here. We're just like...
See, my understanding is a financially distressed school district is the worst thing for the city.
Yeah.
For its economic growth, for its reliability. I understand the three taxing bodies, I understand that philosophy and those separations, but it is one entity.
Yes, you're right. Exactly.
Okay? So if you guys go into state receivership, that's going to overshadow the entire city and affect the entire county. People got to understand this. And another thing, is this being broadcast on ECTV? If not, why not? Do you go live or is this on a cable?
No, it's on YouTube.
It's on what YouTube?
It's on our website, YouTube TV, but on ECTV.
Yeah, it's on ECTV. Channel twenty-one. Not live. We never broadcast, but it'll be on tomorrow.
But I think that you guys are important enough to be live, just like Steve Constance.
I do think this is a good time to bring up, looking into doing this guy live.
Yeah, I mean, you need to engage your citizenry behind you, not against it.
I know, I know.
And I don't want to be perceived as an adversary or taxpayer. But yeah, I'm concerned about not paying taxes. I want you to actually go further.
I think it's cost us some money to get back online. And right now, with the budget net, I don't know where we can look at that, but I think that's the reason we went off live before is because of the cost factor was a little bit more.
But, you know, I mean, citizens are fools if they don't start thinking about these issues and getting involved and asking questions, especially of their legislators, of their governor, you know, the federal legislature, and the Senator Casey. You know, there's only so much the taxpayers of the city can bear. This is not an overly prosperous area. What's the average that, you know, salary that a worker in Scranton makes? What was it, twenty-three thousand dollars? It's difficult.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, if you don't stand up for your own protections and your own rights, shame on you.
Well, that's why all the utilities get away with murder too. How many people show up for PUCVs? You know, it's unbelievable.
Okay, well, I had one to say. I would be here a week after we get divorced, you know, in this room.
And I just want to bring, I just want to bring one last thing up too. Especially on the heels of the state legislature. I've been working on this all year and I'm not sure where we're at, but I know that we could potentially be in a lot better spot. But I took a study that Erie did out in Erie, Pennsylvania with Dr. J. Bannons and the entire membership out in Erie. I saw what they did. They gave, and long, long story short, they garnered an extra four point three million dollars in revenue that was given to us from the state, not as a loan, not anything that we'd have to pay back. They used two main factors. They use a student, student ratio percentage that they were paid from the state. The state gave Erie about thirteen thousand two hundred sixty dollars. They gave Scranton students a reimbursement of thirteen thousand and forty dollars, somewhere in that area. So we're being short-changed. They also used a local tax effort, is what they call. The tax effort means that over the past ten years, how many times has the board levied taxes, mills, in the number of mills against its residents? They were out of the five hundred or so districts, maybe one hundred and thirtieth. So I looked at their numbers and calculated it to our numbers. Our local tax effort is about forty-fifth. So we've raised taxes more than just about all of the taxing bodies and school boards throughout the state of Pennsylvania. We also receive in funding, much less per student, because the House Appropriations Committee is appropriating that money for other places other than kids in Lackawanna County. I went to Senator Blake and I went to both of our state reps. And as the state reps change, I went to the new state rep. They were all in agreement with it. And I've worked, I mean, most of the board knows, most of the administration knows, I've worked hundreds of hours of my own time on this. And I believe that it's gotten to the governor's desk and we're waiting for an answer if we're going to receive some of those funds like Erie did. Because we have the same case, we have the same set of circumstances, if not worse. And I was hopeful to see that they would be getting back to us as soon as there are certain board passes on the state level legislative passes before the final, before the final budget is passed. So I have worked on that. A lot of people on the board have assisted me with that. But believe me, I am as concerned as you are. I have a child in the district. I'm going to have another child in the district shortly. And the last thing I want to do is increase the burden on the taxpayers. I don't think that there's anything off the table when we move into this budget season. And it's going to be very difficult.
I just want to add to that work. We also worked very hard in the last year on the planned company. The money was four point eight million dollars that was owed to us for the last ten years. That is laid aside and we got that forthcoming and we just got the money and placed into the budget, into physical budget, which helps a lot. So just to show you...
We are trying to close the gap.
Yeah. I mean, we're working. We're working very hard. That's what we want to let you know. We're working very hard. Are we magicians? No. But we're trying to do the best we can to make sure that the budget starts coming down.
And I agree, because you really don't see what we're doing in the background, per se. And it's hard, it's hard as a taxpayer to understand that. But we really, truly are chipping away and chipping away every single solitary day. We really are.
And, you know, this is like sometimes a full-time job for us. I mean, we take time out of our business. I'm in the building many times, I've been having meetings with the superintendent, have a meeting with Jenny Orr, or, you know, what we're doing, our agendas. We're working. We're here all the time. We put a lot of hours in this board to make sure that, and we don't get compensated for it, we have no pay. But this board has an interest in this city and our children of the city. And that's why we do it.
And may I add one last thing? One last thing. Next meeting you come to, and your friend that I met at the last meeting, bring twenty of your friends.
I will have twenty.
Well, you'll have twenty. Well, please, bring them.
Okay, before we close, I'd just like to say that thank you to the administration and the school district for putting the metal detectors downstairs. I've been trying them for the nine years I've been on this, four years I've been on the board. We're in place. I feel like we all feel a lot safer now. Thank you again for doing that. With anything else, we'll call for a adjournment.
Sure. Sure. Go ahead. Joan?
Can we have someone looking for the cost or if there's costs associated with...
Joan?
I'm talking, Joan. Yeah, we'll see. Okay. All right. Jerry.
What?